That may have a motion to reconvene in public session. John, seconded by Julie, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Okay. Moving on, I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, April 23 at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. I'll keep my remarks very, very short this evening. We have a couple of things going on. The first thing is that we're going to, under Robert's rules, you're not supposed to amend a special agenda, but Robert's rules is really for our convenience. I'm going to break them. And we are going to, we have two appointments this evening for principals at Oxbridge and Hindley, and we're going to do that before we move on with the rest of our meeting as a courtesy, so that they don't have to stay. Subsequent to that, we will be talking about the Educator Diversity Plan. We are having an initial discussion on school start times. I will emphasize it is a very initial first discussion. This is just an opportunity for the Board to understand the magnitude or the scope of a change like this and what the process of considering a change like this would be. There will, we will, if we are indeed interested, will be taking up that question of being interested later in May. So understand that tonight's discussion is very, very preliminary. The last piece is, as a lot of you know, we were at the Board of Finance quite late last night. They did pass the budget. There is an impact to the school board budget, and we'll be talking about that and the process for addressing that near to the end of the meeting. So with that, I will take a motion to amend the agenda to move items B and C to immediately following, prior to item A. John, seconded by Dennis, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you all. With that, I'll move on to the possible appointment of Oxbridge Elementary School Principal, Dr. Adley.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, people who are joining us in person and also remotely.
Get everything.
Yes, I was wondering, did you change your mind again? But I was going with the flow anyway.
All right. Sorry. Superintendent's report. I'm sorry.
Are we doing public comment? Pardon? Public comment.
Public comment, yes. I'll learn how to run a meeting tomorrow. Please forgive me. Public comment.
Good evening. If anybody in person would like to participate in public comment, please approach the podium and wait for the chair to acknowledge you. If anybody online would like to participate, please use the raised hand icon and wait to be acknowledged.
Joanna Walsh, 17 Pleasant Street, and co-chair of CDSP. Despite Mr. Palin's insistence that people move here for the police and the library, we know, and you know, that people move here for the schools. If you take away the library, people will still move here. If you take away the beaches, people will still move here. That's a town called New Canaan, if you take away the beaches. If you take away the educational experience that makes Darien exceptional, then people will no longer move here. We implore you, as you begin the reallocation process, to leave the teachers and staff in place. The student experience in the classroom must be protected. Greg Grambling, David Brown, Julie Best, Katie Lublin, and Sarah Parent, thank you for already understanding this and doing the right thing way back on February 13th. The only thing that has changed between now and then is an extremely irresponsible vote by the Board of Finance. There are not $2 million of efficiencies in this budget. Difficult conversations and decisions will have to be endured. We know that means athletics, technology, furniture, clubs, professional development, security, and many other things are all in play. No one will be happy. But if you keep our teachers and aides, at least our children will still leave this district with the exceptional education that we all moved here for. Thank you.
For those participating, please state your name and address and note the time with the chair. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Rebecca Robbins. I'm an Assistant Professor of Medicine at Harvard Medical School. I grew up and was born and raised in Darien, Connecticut. I'm passionate about kids and their health, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about my research as a sleep scientist. I direct a lab where I look at the consequence of sleep in a variety of domains, in particular as it relates to young people. In America, we have a sleep deprivation crisis that impacts all of us, but the hardest hit are our young people. Seventy percent of kids, of high school students in America, fall short of their physiological, biological need for sleep every single night of the school week. On the weekends, they engage in what we call compensatory sleep, on average delaying their sleep and wake times by two or three hours, completely changing their clock to make up for some of that lost sleep. In a vacuum, this doesn't necessarily matter, but when we look at some of the outcomes, they're increasingly grave. Insufficient sleep is a significant predictor of car accidents, viral illness, flus, colds, et cetera. But some of the things that matter the most to, I think, all of us as educators and parents are among the most concerning. When we look at mental health and insufficient sleep in young people, young people who are sleeping on average five hours a night, which is, I would argue, what many people in this town, what many young people are in this town, the risk for suicidal ideation, thinking, planning, and attempting suicide is twofold increased under conditions of five hours or less. When we look at four-hour sleepers, the conditions are particularly concerning, sixfold increase for suicidal ideation in young people. And when we look at academic excellence, the other side of the coin, the good stuff, kids that are getting enough sleep, consistent sleep, have a significant better chance at better grades and academic excellence in the classroom. In America, high schools start far too early. This does not happen in other countries. I'm passionate about school start times because I often attribute my career as a sleep scientist to being, to coming of age in an environment where I didn't get enough sleep and we're limiting kids. We're doing this natural experiment every single week, every night, on our young people. Adolescents at puberty have a delay in their secretion of melatonin. We've demonstrated this in controlled laboratory settings. Typical teenager is sleepiest at 10:00 PM or later. That increase or that delay in a preference for bedtimes is at odds with our early school start time, so it results in a squeeze on their sleep. And again, this compensatory engaging and additional sleep and mismatched sleep timing on the weekends, which throws their internal biological clock off. When we delay school start times, we've done this in naturalistic experiments where we delay by an average of an hour. This has been done in several school systems, Seattle, Washington in particular. When you delay school times by an hour, that gives kids on average, this is objectively measured, they're not self-reported data, 35 more minutes of sleep. That's associated with a 5% increase risk, or 5% increase in grades across the board. So I'm here tonight to implore you to consider some of the evidence that will be shared and delay school start times. It's not a one-for-one ratio. If you add a minute of school start times, that they'll get an extra hour of sleep. But as we talked about, that one-hour delay was associated with a 35 increased, 35 increased or more minutes of sleep. So if you're going to do it, my only suggestion is to really do it right and try to meet the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendation, which is 8:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Robbins, can you share your address? I'm sorry if I missed it.
I'm sorry, just for, we put them in the minutes. Yeah.
Just town.
Darien, yes. I split my time between Darien and Boston.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tegwin Collins, and I live at Three Circle Road. I eagerly look forward to hearing tonight's important discussion about healthy school start times, and I know that the more than 475 Darien parents who have expressed support also do. Ten years ago, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommended that middle and high schools start no earlier than 8:30 so that kids can get the sleep they need due to the biological shift in their circadian rhythm during puberty. The benefits include lower rates of depression, including suicidal ideation, improved safety from fewer car accidents, less alcohol and drug use, improved academic performance, reduced risk of obesity, and improved quality of life. Many other health organizations have endorsed this position, including the American Psychological Association, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, the Society of Pediatric Nurses, the National Association of School Nurses, the American Medical Association, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and the U.S. Surgeon General. That's not all, but I only have three minutes. Other districts across the nation have heeded this guidance, including the State of California, the State of Florida, and many of our peers and sport rivals closer to home, Wilton, Westport, Greenwich, New Canaan, and Newtown. Bus studies and a fresh design of start times across the district helped inform final plans, some of which were budget neutral. Richfield just reopened the topic at their Board of Education meeting on Monday, and Trumbull has healthy school start time drafted in their budget for next year. I'll highlight just two recent examples from communities like ours in terms of the impact. Data from New Canaan in 2023 showed that improved well-being, improved amount and quality of sleep, and improved academic performance among their high schoolers one year after healthy school start time. Similarly, in Chatham, New Jersey, kids got more sleep, grades improved, kids felt less stressed, and importantly, the number of kids who considered suicide decreased one year after implementing a healthy school start time. Change is hard. I'm a Taurus. I hate change, but I look at the benefit of this policy on multiple dimensions of teen life. I see Darien trail our peers. And selfishly, I think about my own three kids progressing through a school system for which we specifically moved to this town. The Darien Board of Education wants what's best for our children, and I am extremely grateful for your service, your commitment, and your passion to this end. A healthy start time is what's best for our kids, so let's do this.
We have no raised hands at this time.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Alan, please.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'd just like to recognize that the last week has been an interesting week. We have everything from the eclipse to the rain and snowstorm that caused the delay. We had a secure, the high school event, and to top it off, we had the earthquake. I would like to congratulate the kids and the staff for using this as a unique learning opportunity. It was just a fun activity to be around a district experiencing this. I don't know, we have a sleep doctor here. I don't know about you, but I felt a wee bit queasy watching it all. I don't know if that's a symptom or not, but I just, and it was exciting. But one of the things I would like to say to our community, thank you so much, because there was a couple of events there that were disruptive. That wasn't one of them. And I want to appreciate your patience with the district, your understanding as we communicate under certain different events. And it is very helpful that you wait and listen to the response, and we'll continue to give you updates, but that is very much appreciated, so thank you for that. Our Let Us Show Your Core Review Team continues to meet. We are on track. There will be a wee bit of an update. I went to the Curriculum Committee this week, and we're on track for recommending a change by the end of the year for a pilot to start next year. So that's the basic summary. Thank you to our PTO who spoke tonight for bringing in Dan Santos, who's an illustrator and a children's author, to visit all of the elementary schools this week. Grade five students, for translational purpose, have visited the middle school, and grade eight have already visited the high school. The HHR building contractors will be beginning to prepare each of the sites during April for their construction trailers. We do have PNZ meeting just for the Leroy Fitch-Thorndale Discussion about Parkham on the 23rd. That coincides with the Board, but we'll work out who goes where for what particular event. The PPK Literacy Steering Committee continues its work. That survey closes on Friday, April 12th. We have about 175 parents have responded today, so thank you for that. If you're out there and listening and haven't completed that, it's being sent out with the, from the various schools, from my office as well, so you'll have one last chance by the end of the day, Friday, to complete it. I will say, I received a number of emails from parents about the Safe Schools Climate Survey, and majorly around the topic of transparency. Why is it so awkward? Why are we, to quote some of them, jumping through hurdles? Why are we making it so difficult for people to actually see the survey? To this day, some of the surveys that we have administered really are, the Thrive in Youth Survey, for instance, we always send that out to parents. We let parents see all the questions and events. People can opt out of that, as they can opt out of this particular survey. It just so happens with this particular survey, to protect the intellectual property, which is really done by the National School Climate Center, they are the ones who administer it. Part of the administration of that, which by the way, is recommended by the Connecticut State Department of Education, is one of the best, if not the best, survey for climate survey around, but they have a non-disclosure agreement with that. We've tried to be very upfront with meeting our policies, the state law and federal law around how parents can actually see that. Yes, there's a wee bit of legal ease with it and a wee bit of awkwardness with it, and it may give the perception, what are you trying to, do you some words hide? We're not trying to hide anything. We'd never try to hide that. But we do have to comply because there's ramifications for not complying with the actual, with the actual agreement we have with them. I've had some people say, well, why did you even enter an agreement with somebody who's going to require you to do that? Well, again, this is one of the most highly recommended surveys to actually administer. We did it too, also because we can nationally norm, we can locally norm. We didn't want to write our own questions because that opens you up for even more scrutiny as to, like, why would you ask a question like that? Why not ask some other questions? So I just want to reiterate that never would we conceal something deliberately or otherwise. It's just we're trying to comply with the regulations and the memo of understanding that we actually have with the company. Having said that, just transition, just a wee reminder that the high school Out of Darkness Walk is Sunday, April 28th. If you put that on your calendar, that's a very special thing. I think we're only one of two high schools, if not only one high school, who actually does the walk, Out of Darkness Walk, for high school students. It's open to the public, it's open to staff members, and we'll have an opportunity to go and support our students. The anonymous alerts is up and running. Most of the cases have been, our incidents reported have been at the middle school level. Perhaps not surprising, but it's running as smoothly, such a transition as we might expect. Actually, we've got two high school students here. I don't know if they've done anything with it or what they've heard. Maybe when they give their announcements, they're going to give us a wee update. So spring recess is around the corner, so we wish all our families a relaxing time during spring recess. Just for Board of Finance Subcommittee Meeting is on this Friday. It was moved, you may recall. The Board of Facility, the Facilities Subcommittee is on Thursday, and the Board of Education Communications is on Friday, 26th. The 25th is the Facilities Committee meeting. Just to correct you, it's the Finance Subcommittee, Dr. Adley, on Friday. He's at Board of Finance. Oh, sorry, at Board of Admin. Wonder why that's on you. Thank you. Thank you, someone mind. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Student representative reports.
Good evening. So things are running slower at the high school right now just because quarter three just ended, and we're going into April break next week. So just a lot of tests given last minute by teachers. And student government elections for the class of 2020, sorry, 2025 happened last week, so we have a new executive board and class representatives. And as for the anonymous alerts, aside from the initial day when we had the assemblies for each of the grades, people were talking a lot about it then, but it's since died down. I think people are more going to use it when they need rather than, like, I haven't heard any instances of kids abusing it yet, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, as Swaha mentioned, we're just coming into the beginning of quarter four, and hopefully a restful and rejuvenating spring recess for everyone. And we had a very successful Yunka Posers concert, and student productions are up and running in the next coming weeks, so be sure to be on the lookout for this. And yeah.
Thank you both very much. Approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the following? Minutes of the special meeting held on March 26, 2024, and regular meeting held on March 26, 2024. Julie, seconded by Dennis, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Board committee reports. Sarah.
The Curriculum Subcommittee met yesterday morning. We discussed literacy update as always, and the K to, sorry, six to 12 language arts, and Mr. Janosko and Dr. Fattigan will be coming back to us likely in May with some ideas about moving forward with that.
Julie.
Thank you. Communications Subcommittee met on March 27th. We reviewed and discussed the report from the focus groups we'd conducted. We had some discussion around policies around communications, and the committee meets again on April 26th. Also, the Policy Subcommittee met on April 5th, and we have a number of policies in the pocket this evening for a first read. That next meeting is May 3 for policy.
Thank you. Okay. Now we are on the possible appointment of the Oxbridge Elementary School Principal. Okay, Alan.
Well, good evening again, and I'm delighted, first of all, for Oxbridge. I would say thank you to the members of the Interview Committee. We've had parents on that committee, staff members, participate in Administrator's Central Office, so thank you to the two who are last standing candidates who come here tonight. Thank you for surviving the process and for all of your time and attention and preparation. I'm delighted this evening, actually, to introduce a colleague. Christopher Malillo is currently the Superintendent of Newtown, and he's going to come back to his roots as a elementary principal with a wealth of experience pre-K. Actually, he brings the pre-K through K, the full experience of the portrait of the graduate. So I'm delighted to introduce Christopher to the Board here for appointment.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion to appoint Mr. Christopher Malillo as Principal for Oxbridge Elementary School? That's Greg, seconded by Dave, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you.
Miss Malillo, congratulations to you.
Thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to rolling up my sleeves and doing the work and fostering a thriving educational environment for our students, for our families, for our staff, for our faculty. And I really can't wait to hit the ground and start running, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening to you. I think it's Mrs. Malillo, forgive me if it's not, but welcome to, welcome to Darien. I'm also delighted to introduce for appointment for the Hindley School Principal, Mr. Ross Cooper. Ross comes from Chappaqua, New York. He's currently the Assistant Principal at the Roaring Brook School for K through four. I'm delighted to introduce him with his passion and expertise. He's also an author, an educational researcher, but more importantly, an educator. So I introduce Mr. Ross Cooper to the Board.
Okay. May I have a motion to appoint Mr. Ross Cooper as Principal for Hindley Elementary School? Julie, seconded by Dennis, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Like I said, I don't take these things for granted. It's a pleasure to stand before you today, and I really can't wait to get started, immerse myself in the culture, and serve the students, and serve the community at Hindley. I very much look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, just for clarity, these positions commence July 1st, and we'll notify the parents this evening through our press release, so thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay. We'll go on to discussion and action on Increasing Educator Diversity Plan. And that's you, Marge. My committee. And your committee.
So while we get the slide.
Will you introduce your committee?
I am. Thanks. While we get the slideshow, if I will introduce the committee. Rajeev Thadav, a fourth-grade teacher at Oxbridge Elementary School. Marcus Hamilton, fourth-grade teacher at Hindley Elementary School. Scott McCarthy, who needs no introduction. Kathy Fulton, a social studies teacher at the high school, is also an integral part of the committee. She had family commitment tonight, but she will continue the work as we go along. So the whole plan is, was in your packet, the template provided by the state, which has been changed multiple times since the requirement was first implemented in a change in the law in 2018. Because of the problems with rollout and the lack of support for the state, several area districts did ask for and receive extensions, so our plan is due to the state on April 15. They will give us feedback, and so tonight we're asking you, as required by the statute, not only to approve the plan, but perhaps because of the timeline could be tricky when we get feedback, to authorize the superintendent to make changes that may be required by the state. If not, we can bring it back to you. It just might be, the turnaround time might be a little tricky. I do want to say that this work has been ongoing for the past couple of years. We've gone to several state trainings, we've gone to targeted minority recruitment job fairs, and of course, it aligns with strategy foresee of our strategic plan. Here we are again with the vision, mission, and core values of the district, so this work aligns with all of those.
Right. So the regulation from the state requires us to consider the ethnic, racial, and linguistic diversity of educators, but what we know in best practice and from the research is that it's important to consider more than just that. So it's important to consider, of course, the ethnic, racial, and cultural factors, but also the language, the language factors and the disability status, among other diversity dimensions as well. So we know that students perform better academically, they have higher academic achievement, when they have educators who, who look like them and who represent their cultural experience. And we also know that learning to work with different people, learning to learn from different people is also a helpful, a helpful experience for students to have as they transition towards, towards graduation as well. So this aligns with our vision. We wanted to provide you some information about trends here in Darien, so you can see that over the last five years, the percentage of students of color have increased about a percentage point each year here in Darien. The percentage of educators of color has remained about flat, and to give you some context, that 5.8% is 31 educators here in Darien. We also wanted to note here that it's important for us, we've received legal guidance, that while we want to have measures of success of our plan, that having quotas attached to that can be problematic. And so we want to make sure we're looking at data and we're focused on that, but we also want to make sure that we're not making success criteria that includes quotas. We also wanted to provide you some information about our district reference groups. So here at the top is Darien, where we have 5%, 5.8%, as you saw on the slide previous. We have 19.2% students of color here in Darien, which is, which is the lowest within our DIRG. In terms of the percentage of educators, we fall sort of towards the top of the average within, within the DIRG as well.
All right. So research indicates that educators of color seek employment in districts with educators of color, and that students' achievements increase with an increase in the diversity of educators. Okay, what does that mean? So when, and research shows, so when students have a diverse workforce, they achieve, right? They succeed. Why is that? Let me give you an example. If I am patting my head, a student will ask me, Mr. Thadav, why are you hurting yourself? I can easily say, oh, no. In my hairstyle right now that I have, I cannot go like this because of my hair texture, so I pat, so I don't mess up my hair. They're learning. They're not only learning from me and connecting to me, but they are connecting with the world around them.
To add on, you know, oftentimes, my students, they come into class saying, you know, Mr. Hamilton, you look like that basketball player that was, you know, or that football player that was on last night. And, you know, it makes me think, why is it that black men are only seen as athletes or entertainers? So with the help, we could get the message across that diverse role models can be educators of color. And best practices show students who are exposed to educators of color increases student achievement, as Scott mentioned. Moving on to the next slide for the next, there are three parts to the recruitment plan. So the first question is, how will we market Darien? So we plan on honing in on the great work that we are currently doing. Unfortunately, we feel that it isn't getting enough attention, so with that being said, where will we market the district? So we spoke about using social media platforms such as Facebook, Twitter, and other safe and friendly platforms to really get that message across. And then we also spoke about visiting nearby colleges, another great tactic that can potentially attract more candidates. And then lastly, we spoke about exploring in our own district with something called Grow Your Own Program, very similar to the Teachers Residency Program.
To speak on the Teachers Residency Program, TRP, I was hired as a pair of hair at Tokonik in Darien. So I was approached by Mary Michelson, who was the principal at the time at Tokonik. I would not be a teacher right now if it wasn't for her and Laura Straighton, who saw something in me to pursue, to be a teacher, right? That not only helped me, but it also helped my family to become a teacher. That not only helped me, but it also helped my family to become a teacher. Now, how great would that be if Darien, as a district, as its own, has a program like that? Instead of, say for instance, like we both were in the program, driving all up and down Fairfield, right? We have it right here in Darien. How great would that be? Where we're getting educated, we're getting the experience to become great teachers with the curriculum right here. I think it would be a win-win for everyone, not a win-win for just for me or the teachers, but a win-win for the district.
So we also took a look at our hiring and selection processes. Beginning this year, every, or actually beginning with the 24-25 year, anyone who participates on an interview committee will need to receive the state-developed anti-bias training. So we will do that. We will also look at the criteria we use for screening, interviewing, and selection to make sure that we have a standard-based, shared, common vision of what the appropriate high-quality applicant will look like.
So with retention, we will look at the best practices to retain all employees. Now, that's all employees. For instance, new teachers, what can we do? What are some best practices for new teachers? For instance, keeping them in the same school, keeping them in the same grade. That not only helps the teacher master their skills with the curriculum and teaching, but that also is a win-win for the students because they're getting the best out of that teacher. Something else to explore is increased cultural responsiveness. Rajeev, what does that mean? I'm gonna tell you right now. Retention is not an issue here in Darien. Once you get us, you keep us. We stay. So that's not a problem. But what are some possible things that are done inter-district? Basically, like celebration or events. Right now, it's done in isolation. So what Ox Ridge does, Henley does, we're not doing it all together. We can share everything that we do, and we can all benefit from it. Children all can benefit. What are we benefiting from? What are you talking about? For instance, at Ox Ridge, we have these beautiful big displays. And whenever there's an event or there's a celebration, the kids get to see the display and it's shown, right? And the teachers take the opportunity to bring their students to talk about it because the PTO does take time to basically decorate, right? We can share that with the other schools and say like, "Hey, this is what we did. You can do that too."
And just to build off of that, Henley hosts a spectacular event. It's called the Henleys Heritage Night, where families, students, teachers, administrators, they come together and they showcase their culture, customs, and traditions. It truly is a powerful night. As mentioned, we are doing extraordinary things within our district. We just need to shine the light.
So I just want to emphasize that everything we're doing here will attract and retain all educators, but we are hoping that it also sets the conditions to attract a more diverse workforce. And we are not going to sacrifice any quality in any kind of educator that we attract. So we're ready for questions if you have any.
Done.
Maybe you could just give an update on what's going on with teachers and residents?
So we got very lucky the first year. Also, it is, if you remember, it's a $10,000 commitment per teacher and residence plus another $6,000 for the mentorship program. You also make a commitment to have people remain in the district as teachers. And in difficult budget times, we didn't feel that it was appropriate or ethical to continue with the program, which is why, as Rajeev and Marcus talked about, we are looking to do something that would be in-house.
And there was a, we weren't getting candidates also. Is that true through teachers? I mean, there were some dry years or-
Yes, the second year, we only had one participant and, you know, I wasn't in the program. I think that, I don't want to speak for you, so I'm gonna say it and then you can fill in. But I think maybe there are, were gaps in the program where we could maybe do a little better.
Okay.
What are the gaps? I'm just interested in the gaps. Was it, you talked about driving up and down I-95 or something like that?
So sometimes we would have class like in Hampden. So we had a great experience being in the classroom. That takes away time for us to be in the classroom because we had to leave early. Now you have to think about subs. And now we had to be, like, sit in the traffic to get to class. And then that's just too much the lot. That's why we were saying like pushing it in-house. Another gap is like support. Darien supported us very much. But the program, you know, we were great. We had a great district. And it was like, okay, you're not babies anymore. You're on your own. So that's where the gaps were. But Darien didn't leave us alone. I'm not leaving because I was supported by the district, where I felt like the program kind of like let us go.
Thank you for that color.
In addition to that, they did a significant amount of coursework last year, where I think a lot of us thought that they would get graduate credit for that, which they didn't. And so they're both in graduate programs now. I think we would look for a way to streamline that.
And also to add, you know, there were some great things that TRP did offer to us. For an example, having the experience to work in a classroom all year round. Whereas, you know, if you go to like college or the university, you might be there, you might be student teaching for maybe three, four months, and that's it. So we had the luxury of being in the classroom from September all the way to June and really building that connection with students, which really went a long way now that we're in our classrooms on our own. So there were some great things TRP also offered as well, so.
Thank you.
Shirley or Scott, can you talk a little bit about your vision for employment of people with disabilities in this district? What will that look like?
So in sort of a similar light to what the plan expects for people of color, for educators of color, there's a lot of research that suggests that looking at multiple dimensions of diversity is important. So in the, in the general population of professionals, 6% of individuals have disabilities or identify as having disabilities, whereas we know that that identification rate within our schools is higher. And so I know that I've had the experience of being in a classroom where a Learning Center teacher has disclosed, "I had an IEP when I was in high school," and how powerful that that experience was for the students to be able to see, "You had an IEP, and now you have a master's degree, and you're a mentor to me." And that was just a powerful moment, and that relationship and connection became so strong that this, that there was a, you know, it wasn't just validating, I know it's frustrating having to be here. It's, "I've been in your shoes, and I can understand you, and I can relate to you." So similarly, making pathways for people with disabilities to also become educators and making sure that there aren't barriers. Some of the things Marge was suggesting, making sure that there's not bias in the process to become an educator, is important.
Thank you.
The only thing I would add to that, and I think Scott covered everything, is that sometimes we've actually created opportunities for students who have a learning difference. So they also have a mentor who resembles and has some attributes that they have also in their learning differences. We've actually had consultants work with them as mentors per an IEP recommendation, and it's been incredibly successful as their journey goes into a pathway they're taking.
Thank you. Anyone else? Katie?
Thank you. First, thank you so much for being here today. We hear a lot of presentations and overviews about initiatives and programs, and it's so impactful to hear from people who have actually been through it. So thank you for sharing that experience. I did want to ask a clarifying question as it relates to the legal statute. So I'm curious, Scott, really, to what you were kind of talking about with, like, what does diversity really mean versus holistically, versus maybe how this is being captured? So I appreciate that, that we are talking about looking for and appreciating diversity in terms of, you know, religious affiliation and disabilities and a million other things. But I did want to ask if the statute is the one that was specific to the data that's presented by educators and students of color? Like, is the, is the legal statute only specifying a couple of components?
It is, yes. Yeah, the regulation for the plan requires us to look at increasing educators of color.
Okay. And so then, does this program, I'm curious just also how we might expand it to include like diversity and other characteristics as well, but also in a way that is sensitive to what people disclose? Like, as a very small example, you know, job applications will ask if you have a disability. One of them that's listed on there is one that I have, which is celiac, right? And it's literally just what I eat for lunch, but like, it's on there, right? So I'm just curious about, you know, how we kind of go about ensuring that we have diversity and that we're counting things without being too invasive into the people that are applying and working with us.
So I'm just gonna say that I'm not sure it's legal to ask if you have a disability on a job application. So I'm, so we would, we would not do that. We actually stopped collecting information on an application about demographic information because I thought that it would make our selection process totally anti-biased. We may collect it to keep track going forward, but we won't share it. We're not going to share it, that part of the application with the interview committee, so that we can track our success. Thank you.
What are you most, sorry, go ahead. I'll go last. What are you most concerned about in terms of making this program successful? Are there any barriers you're concerned about?
I'm actually most concerned about the feedback we're going to get from the state because I've heard that a couple of other districts, the state asked for numbers. Like, you have this, you should have that. So, you know, we'll see. But I know that this board supports the work, and I, other than a Grow Your Own Program, which could be expensive, I think that we can do the work. We're planning to expand the committee once we get feedback from the state, so we'll have more bodies. We'll be working closely with Amy if there are curriculum ideas that we have. We're not trying to take over or add to our curriculum. But I don't, I can't think of a barrier.
I think one barrier we've talked about as a group is that 169 districts are submitting a plan to do the same thing and all vying for the same candidates who are coming out of programs. And so a concern we have is how do we make sure that ours, that our plan is competitive to attract the same group of individuals everyone else is looking to attract?
Okay.
That's basic, that's basically my question. I mean, I'm just Googling something, and it's saying the graduates of black males graduating with teacher's degrees dropped from 2017 from 6% to almost 1%. So, and you mentioned that people who look like, people who teach, teach, something like, people who should probably, if you're, if you're a black man, maybe you should teach in a district which has more black students to then have more representation there. So I'm struggling with how we're going to deal with 169 districts in Connecticut all fighting over the same 1% of black male graduates.
I think we're gonna try to set conditions that will attract the most diverse workforce that we can. If we then can't attract them, we'll come back to you and we'll try to figure it out together. It may be as a result of the, you know, dwindling workforce, and especially the diverse workforce. But we want to set the best possible conditions for all our educators, which hopefully will attract whatever there is that's, you know.
Greg, did you have a question?
Marge answered one of my questions, which was related to like, how do we know what percentage of the teachers that we're actually getting in terms of applications? Like, how do we know the demographic breakdown of that? Like, if it's 100% not color, you know, we could be batting 1,000 but not know it. Like, there's no ability to do that. It sounds like we're not tracking that, but we will going forward.
We will going forward.
My, my other question was, just like, what exactly is being submitted to the state? Is there a plan?
The spreadsheet, the spreadsheet that was in your packet, which is impossible to deal with. But that's the template that they provided. They had the three tabs that we needed to fill in with goals and metrics and potential barriers. So that's what we're submitting.
So on the goal side of it, so we're gonna have specified goals in terms of where we want to get to? Is that right?
No. So that, so the HR directors got together and decided that we wouldn't do that because we, again, have no way to measure how we're doing in a, you know, area of limit. So we were very careful to say we were going to explore things, we were going to investigate things. And then, once we explore and investigate, we'll be able to set some more targeted goals.
Yeah, it seems like you are very delicately balancing, working on a tight wire between trying to do something that I think could be very helpful, but at the same time, like, we can't have discriminatory policies for hiring.
I was very concerned for a long time, and I will take part of the responsibility for delaying the work, that there was, legal advice was not available. So, thank you.
Marge, in full disclosure here, just given that question, I do not think the board had the actual spreadsheet as part of this.
We just had the PowerPoint.
We had the PowerPoint. It wasn't there.
Okay.
PowerPoint was wonderful, but the presentation of it was even better.
Yes. Can you just explain what's on the spreadsheet, just so we-
So there are three, we'll send it to you. There are three tabs with recruitment. So you need a theory of action on the front page, and then there's a recruitment tab, a hiring and selection, and then retention. And there are goals, like, so the recruitment is explore additional avenues to recruit a more diverse workforce. You know, for retention, it's explore the opportunity for additional mentorship programs, that kind of thing.
Okay.
And I'm looking at, you know, ethnic, racial, and linguistic diversity. Are those checkboxes in an application where you can say, you know, the foreign languages that you speak? Or, I mean, I'm just trying to understand. Or are you doing-
So we do now ask if people are proficient in a language. But the rest of it is a section in the AppleTrack system that I had removed after having an unfortunate experience in another district, but we'll put it back.
So they will have boxes checked, basically, just in order to ensure-
They can only be optional, so they'll be optioned.
Oh, it is still optional?
It needs to be.
Right. Okay. Okay.
So, so just to clarify, there's multiple components of it. There's recruitment of an existing pool. There's retention of anyone in our district. But it looks like we're also looking to see if we can be a part of growing the pool of folks who are interested in entering education through, that's the Grow Your Own piece?
That's the idea from our committee? That wasn't from the state?
Okay. I think that's an important component, so thank you for identifying it. Okay, it is on here for approval. Are we comfortable doing that? Okay, without the spreadsheet?
Yeah, can we see the spreadsheet?
Yeah, of course. Absolutely.
Okay. All right, any other questions before we have a motion?
I just want to go back to Greg's question real quickly. At some point, we have to decide on some sort of metric. So that will be a work in progress as to what we are going to agree on. We've got like the strategic plan. We'll have to decide if, and we'll get some feedback from the state to help us with it, I hope. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you all. Again, we appreciate it, especially on a school night.
Marcus, Rajeev, thank you very much for your participation, both tonight and as leadership in that committee. Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the increasing educator diversity plan? Dennis, seconded by Julie. All those in favor, that is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay. The initial discussion on school start times, Dr. Athlee.
So this school, the school start times was a topic that has been brought up by members of the community. Some of them I see right here. You're welcome. Thank you for staying the course and actually for being patient, and the board put this on, how quickly time flies. But in the fall, we put this on for a spring discussion. So I'm just framing the discussion tonight, not getting into all the pros and cons. And, but I just wanted to give the board some thoughts of, if they want to tackle this, how might you go about tackling it as a, as a sort of process? And the board can, you know, reflect upon that, massage or otherwise. So what I have here is just a simple sort of couple of pages about how we made approach this. Yes, some school districts are, an increasing number of school districts are looking at school start times for the physical health, social, emotional health, and academic achievement of its students. There's a number around us, such as Greenwich, Wilton, Gulfport, New Canaan. West Hartford's not that close to us, obviously, and Simsbury and the other areas. Peter Hartford area have implemented, explored, or decided not to, such as Westport, West, and Ridgefield. I was sure I have had experience in a district that went through the whole process and ended up not doing anything. I will say this, as a superintendent, you're asking me like, "How much your position is?" I don't dispute the research at all. I think that the research is pretty clear and compelling about later start times for our high school students. You'll hear me a little bit later saying, but at the same time, I would, I would say to the board, "Don't go through it if you're not gonna do it right." It's just, I don't believe it's worth it. If you don't do it right, you heard a presentation of tonight of what does doing it right really mean? Honestly, if they're only gonna take a, take a start time, particularly for high school students, for 10, 15 minutes, I guess honestly, don't think it is worth it. If you're gonna make it to 8:30, that's a different discussion. And I do think it would be worth it then. So ultimately, for myself, I would recommend doing it if you do it, do it right. But all things being equal, so we'll continue to go through this. But all things being equal, so we'll, we'll continue to go through this. The idea of high school start times started to change in the 1970s, so it's not a new idea, right? It's been around. Some school systems have been slower to respond to it than others for different reasons. All decisions are locals, so there are, there are local decisions and factors to consider. Many of them are transportation, athletics, after school activities, parent schedules, preschools, start of the school day, and then a cost benefit analysis. I will say that I think you have to do, it may be a wee bit frustrating, but if you're going to do this, I do think you have to do it thoughtfully. And over a period of time, I mean, my recommendation to do a timeline that gets us started for the fall of 2026. So a process, if you, if the board wanted to go through this process, I, I think you should define what the actual charge of a committee should be. I have outlined it there, what I think the charge could be, might be, or something like the, of what I've put down. I would suggest that we start a school task force and I've listed the potential committee members. The, the, the chair of that and co-chair of that will be, will be determined. And within those, within that committee, they would have subcommittees in areas of health and wellness, student achievement, impact in athletics, co-curricular and extracurricular activities, action, research and community, what I mean by that, what are the local, what are the surrounding towns doing? What's the research on the, what their findings have been? What does the community think about doing this? What's the impact on preschools and so on and so forth? And then, of course, the transportation alone. Program evaluation would be around those particular areas. So again, we go back to what metrics would you look at? So we would have to define those upfront, but they would circulate around gains in sleep for secondary students, the impact on attendance, tardiness, student activities, the actual academic achievement, survey data from parents regarding family impact, and seasonal report of successes and challenges of extracurricular and co-curricular. So we would have to define some sort of metric, the same as if we were doing some other initiative or project. The potential timeline that I'm suggesting here is that the topic has been introduced tonight. I would suggest that the board continue with discussions around this topic before deciding whether you want the commission or report by the Board of Education through the administration. I think you need to have some deliberations the rest of the spring here. The work of the task force would continue through the dates stipulated. The board presentation and findings would be the spring of '25, with board and community feedback continuing through the fall, with the board decision for the spring and fall of '25, and then reflected in the '27 budget in the winter of '25, ultimately resulting if you were starting in the fall of 2026. Some of the considerations that I think the board needs to ponder before an if commission or a report, community input, interest and participation. It will be polarized in one way or the other, right? So it just, it's not going to be an agreement on this. So you're entering into that particular process, you know, they're going to have people who are very happy with what you do or not do. That's not new to the board, right? And we sort of signed up for that a little bit, but I'm just, I'm just noting it. Anticipated expenses, you can't just do this, the administration just can't do this alone. It may seem simple, some of the research may be fairly straightforward, but certainly the transportation would need, under our, our transportation office with Richard, we would need to hire a consultant for that. We also may need a consultant for surveys and different other aspects of the work of the actual committee. I, you see a listed amount there that we don't have any of that accounted for at the minute in the budget and we've just come off the budget discussion. The potential costs is potentially, I don't want to over exaggerate or otherwise, but I mean, it can, can easily get up to a million dollars in terms of staggering buses, more buses, so on and so forth. The ideal situation, by the way, is simply to flip the elementary and the high school start times with some massage. But it's just not as simple as that. The potential impact of staff retention and recruitment, right now, as we start to talk about this, some of our staff members may see this as a good thing or they may go, wait a minute, I'm not like, my, my morning, morning night is going to be disrupted because of this later start time or otherwise. So that, and that may, or might not contribute to them wanting to be here or not wanting to be here. And then the last one I would say is the cost benefit analysis. What we're actually going to expand versus the actual change itself. And I, I just get back to that I just opened up with, if you're not going to do it right and significantly, I don't think it's worth doing. I meant, I would entertain the discussion if the boards would be inclined to think that there's a possibility of actually going through this and executing on it. With that, that's, that's an overview of our recommendation I would, I would, for process wise, if the board would like to actually enter into that process.
We'll talk about the master agenda a little later in the meeting, but what we were recommending is that the board spend this evening just asking if there's any questions about sort of what Dr. Adley's recommended process would be or if there's any additional information the board would like to have in order to talk about this more fully on the 14th. Again, the discussion will be a discussion about starting to discuss. But I think one of the things we've identified wanting to understand is that I would recommend that Dr. Adley come back with us on the May 14th with a fuller understanding of what's happening in area districts, because there do seem to be some dependencies for athletics and extracurriculars and traffic and teaching schedules. So it'd be helpful to understand what's happening in area districts in terms of their logistics and operations. And it would also be helpful, I think, in that, as part of that study to understand if any opinions that their, our fellow districts are willing to share with us in terms of their efficacy in their own homes or districts. So if that can be prepared for the 14th as part of our?
So if we, if the task force was put together, that particular subcommittee, the action, research and community would actually do all of that. What I'm hearing, I'm sure, say, is can we pull a wee bit of that out earlier in the process so that we can at least just discuss it?
Yes.
Yes, that'd be great.
Yes.
One, one other thing, I think just the transportation cost, the million dollar cost, I'm still having a hard time getting my arms around why that would be so high. And I think for us to even think about discussing this, given the budget issues that we're dealing with right now, I think it would be important to maybe get a little bit more insight into that.
So you would need nine buses to accommodate a time change at the high school. And so if we look at other communities in Fairfield County have made change. New Canaan, for example, spent close to a million dollars. Greenwich spent in excess of a million dollars, obviously they're larger. So all the buses are currently tiered. And so the buses that drop off the high school students then turn around and go do elementary routes. And so if you're changing the start time at the elementary schools or at the high school and the middle school to a later start time, they can't then do those same rates at the elementary. If you were to flip elementary and the secondary level, you have a financial impact on things like athletic transportation, field trip transportation. So there is no really zero cost solution to this. But if you were to just change the high school and secondary, just the high school start times, you would need nine buses and then you'd have to be able to source those buses and find drivers for the buses.
Is it a one time?
No, it's ongoing every year.
Million a year.
Can you bring that preliminarily to us for the 14th? I mean, I understood what you said, but a little bit more detail behind that, so we can look at it. Thank you, Rich.
Katie?
Thanks. I do want us to be really, really clear when we're talking about that and even putting that in presentation materials because that was said, you know, like way earlier in the fall by a different board member as, as almost like a non-starter issue. And I think it's just really important to understand that that kind of million dollar price tag is just for changing, like, one school, essentially adding a new fleet of buses as opposed to, like Dr. Adley said, making a change and a switch. And I think that, that there's a very big difference between adding a whole new fleet of buses and changing one building level versus looking at our entire schedule and reorienting it so that the oldest students who naturally sleep later, go to school later, and the younger students who naturally rise earlier, go to school earlier. I think that we do focus a lot on the detriment to the high school students for an early wake time. But we also kind of forget that, that young children do naturally rise early as well. So there's a lot of symmetry where it makes sense. Rich, I do appreciate you commenting that there's not like a zero cost. So I think that we just want to be very clear with like, kind of, you know, an option A costs X and an option B costs Y.
So for something like that, you would have to hire a transportation consultant. So, you know, the cost of that would be between $30,000 and $40,000, you would map something like that out. You know, some districts have looked at things where you just do the high school. That was largely like Greenwich. So New Canaan pushed everybody back, but they still had an impact in transportation. You know, if you were to just flip, like I mentioned, the two, you have to look at how that impacts like athletic transportation, whether or not you can source the buses.
So Rich, just a question for you on that, which was the second thing, was I'm curious why that wouldn't be part of our contract with First Student?
So they would never agree to that.
They would never agree to helping us sort that schedule?
No.
That's crazy.
I would also say, Madam Chair, I'm just worried about like, the honor of a better term, mission creep here, because there's a lot of work to be done. Like, if we're going to say just bring in, just ask Richard or something to give casual answers, it's just that.
I, I think we're just looking to substantiate the potential scope of it. So I think kind of to the point of is this a million dollar decision? Is it not a million dollar decision? I think if it's a $5 decision, a $500,000, a $2 million decision, that could swing up people's decision making, particularly again in light of, of what we've been experiencing from a budgetary perspective, even though that's, you know, not always what we hope. So I, I just think something that will support us in understanding the financial, the probable financial impact with the understanding that there's a swing, we can keep it to that, okay? All right, Alan, I mean, sorry, Sarah.
Thank you. So in, to build on that financial piece to it, and I, I agree with Dr. Adley, the, the research is clear. And I also agree that if we're going to do this, we have to do it correctly and do it at least to 8:30. But we can't talk about this in a silo. So on the 14th, and I, again, this is maybe mission creep, but we have to prioritize at some point, especially in light in the incredibly disappointing outcome and discussions of last evening. We're going to have to prioritize and this is here, but what else is here and here and here that might impact budgeting in the future? And I don't know how you present that to us on the 14th.
Well, so maybe, maybe we chain it out then, there's a, there's a, a presentation on the 14th and then maybe we don't have to hold ourselves to that decision on that evening. If we're not ready to make it, if there's other information that we need, not so much from research, but more from a, how do we prioritize?
And I, I just personally, like, if I say, yes, let's go put a task force together, I want that task force to be able to do that in the, with good faith that the board's going to move forward with it and not say, oh, sorry, thank you for all your work, but now we have priority two that's our focus.
I do think you, yes, I mean, I, I don't think, I agree with you. I think we, we would have to decide to make it a priority. We'd be looking at, you know, identifying it as part of our, our planning process for the, for the future. Julie, then Dave. Oh, sorry, thank you.
Now, I, I guess just kind of piggybacking off what Katie was saying earlier, in terms of looking for efficiencies or mitigation. To my mind, we have to look at the other side, is how do we do scheduling within the schools? Can we compress the schedules or block scheduling, not block scheduling? What are these are things we can look at? I think we have to think about that in scope and, you know, further to what Sarah was saying, this is a big lift. We got a lot of stuff going on. I mean, this to me feels more like strategic planning, five year lookout, as opposed to something we're just going to pick up and figure out for '26 intuitively. Again, it's very early, I have a three page presentation in front of me, we're going to get more details, but just at the get go. I mean, there's so many different variables from staffing, from what teachers have to do to get home to watch their kids, what happens to athletic, what happens to, you know, budget implications, what happens to our ability to, you know, retain talent, you know? And again, what are the positive impacts for the children? Like, all this has to get balanced, it's a lot of data to go through. And I just, this timeline seems really ambitious, look to learn more at the next meeting, but just, yeah.
Julie?
Thank you. Thank you for this work to help this discussion happen. Early days, but happy to be having this conversation. And I just wanted to add to the prioritization question. I think, I do think it'll be helpful if we can do some initial work to pull together what some of our other districts have done and learned. I think that's going to be a very helpful way for us to get a better understanding of what this undertaking might look like. Also, what the benefits could look like and the challenges, obviously. But the prioritization piece of it, I think as we look at that, we have to find ways that we can understand if this, then what isn't happening? Or what do we not have the bandwidth to explore so that we can make those decisions appropriately? And then the last piece of it is to, to try to dimensionalize as we work through this and other projects. If something like this moves forward, what else does it make possible? Are there things that can come off the table because our students are eventually in a better place? Or I, I just think we need to be looking for ways to put ourselves out of other areas of business when we take on something new. If that makes sense, I'm being kind of conceptual there, but just to, to kind of keep it in scope, bigger picture, looking at what, what we're giving to our community and what we maybe then don't need to provide as well. Thanks.
Greg?
I'm just echoing, I think that there's more pre-work that can be done before, I think this potential committee has 21 people on it, before we go and tell those 21 people that you have a lot of work to do on top of your day job.
Dennis?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, this, this, but I'm struggling with this is just, to Greg's point is, it's a lot of work and potential. But, but if you don't take that first step, we're never going to get there because there's always going to be this huge obstacle to never do it. So at some point, you have to take that first step and begin to go. But it's, but I'm with Dave as well, though, is this is a huge undertaking. It's not just something you start today and say, okay, let's go and we start. But so I'm struggling with, I, and I'm struggling with how much work to give you because I kind of want to see how much time this is going to take from these administrators and what, what that would be, you know? But I don't want to take time for you to prepare that and just say, well, this is going to be, so I'm struggling with, what is step one?
That's a good question. I think as part of what was the impact on our, our area districts, how much time did it take them to go through the, the process? Please, if we could find that out. Robin?
And I've got a couple of thoughts. First, first of all, more maybe more of a clarifying question because part of me is saying, you know, if you're starting an hour later, isn't that just shifting all of the activities and homework later? Which means that the high school students will be staying up until midnight instead of 11 o'clock. And I guess part of my question is, is that really benefiting them? And I think one thing that I noticed in the steering, the committee, there were no students on that committee or student government representatives or anyone. And I think the students who have, you know, the early club meetings, the early student government meetings, the sports and all of the different logistics that they're handling, I think their voice is really, really important in this to get a sense of that. And one, one other thing, I, I, I do have some private school experience where they did an interesting thing and they did something with block scheduling where, you know, one or two days a week, they had a little later, later start, but they were able to do it through scheduling. And, you know, even if you put more frees at the beginning of the day and, you know, and again, I don't know the logistics of how that could work, but are there things that we could do that don't rely on changing the entire bus schedule? That we could be creative about that would give the high school students maybe a little bit more sleep? Maybe not every single day, but try to accomplish it in a way that we could be creative.
It's not impossible for, like, just talking expertly here, for a hybrid where the, the high school, for instance, has PLC. You could do PLC every weekend, push it to two hours at least once a week, you're, you're having line to nine o'clock or otherwise. But, and to David's point, this is not in the strategic plan, so the board would have to decide to like place it there somewhere. And yes, actually, it was oversight because we did, we did plan to have students on this committee, so thank you for that.
So even for like the PLCs, those also cost money. So every PLC we had, it's about $15,000.
But, but does someone have information about the sleep and the schedule and how this actually is beneficial? Because to me, it seems like they're just going to stay up later at night and then get up later.
I think you'll find when the groups go through the research of the various groups, even talking to the professor this evening, that that will come out as being pretty clear about the benefits of it. But, but I don't want to just.
Just a question.
That would be the function of one of those groups that have to present that.
Swaha and, and Rihanna, do you guys want to, would you like to add anything? Is there anything that you're?
Yeah, I think it would be very valuable to run a poll on specifically student tardiness and reasons that they would cite for that tardiness. I, transportation is a huge issue, especially when you have two schools that are hundreds of feet away from each other and a massive amount of students trying to get to both. And I also think, you know, like Ms. Nelson was saying, it's so valuable to have student voices on this committee. And they're the most compelling of all because, you know, we lived through these experiences and we can speak. And they're the most compelling of all, because you know, we lived through these experiences and we can speak to how they positively or negatively impact our mental health and how they, um, just another, just another factor to keep in mind is definitely that weed, our brains like secrete melatonin later. So it's not that we would be, it's not that it would be a one for one trade off of we're getting this much more sleep if we start that much later, but it's more so that naturally we'll go to sleep later and wake up later. So these later start times would be more accommodating to this and honestly, I don't think it would change the amount of, you know, late nights the students would be taking. But I think it would allow for them to have a greater recovery and less stress coming into school the next day if they know that they have an hour more. And it wouldn't be that they would be pushing the envelope an hour further, but rather that they would have an hour more to relax or get a cup of coffee at least in between study breaks.
Yeah. And also as uh, for the first three years of high school, I didn't have a parent to drop me off, so I'd have to take the school bus. Um, and until this year, it used to come at six 50 to my stop, which meant waking up at six o'clock or earlier, depending on how much I had to get done that morning, which is extremely early if you're considering that you have to go to bed or like I, the earliest I'd fall asleep, uh, even if I don't have homework, I just staying up doing like relaxing would be 11:30 or like 12 ish. That's just, that, that might just be my schedule, but I think other teenagers can relate to that. Um, so yeah, that's like going on like five hours of sleep a night, which is.
Thank you. Thank you both. That's helpful to hear. We appreciate you speaking.
Just one more. I, I had actually asked my son about this, just as a, you know, this is the ninth grader view, but he was like, well, why don't you just take away frees? And then we can start later and we still would get out at the same time. And no, but he's saying actually he does know neighboring districts that do start later, but they still get out at the same time that Darian High School does. And I don't know what they do, but I think there might be some creative things we could do or think about with scheduling that might be able to accomplish something here without having to change the entire bus schedule. Just a question.
Okay. Do you guys have what you need in terms of what we're looking for?
Unfortunately, yes.
You're welcome. Well, but for the, for, so for the fourteenth, which we were planning to say, it would be some context from area districts, what they are doing logistically and operationally and whether, how much work it took to get there, what the impact has been on students, staff or the community otherwise.
I think the time also, like what time they start, what time they get out would be important as well. So.
And then a preliminary understanding of what we think the, the range of financial implications could be.
So for the, I don't think we can give a range by the 14th because for things like athletics, that's when you need to hire a consultant to do that.
Okay.
Um, the top end of the range, I mean, we can show you what the cost of buses per day, how many buses you would need.
Okay.
But whether or not how it's going to, you're going to have to hire a consultant.
So can we just find actuals from area districts? Yeah, that'd be great.
For what they have.
Yep. Thank you. Uh, Dave, yes.
I guess I would just ask Rich, with that, if we look at others, like how many consultants did they bring in? Which sort of specialties were those? That'd be kind of interesting to see.
Yeah. So everybody had a transportation consultant and then some had um, like other research consultants to look at the non-transportation.
Did anybody do the scheduling consultants? I know we're working with.
That I don't know.
Thank you. Um, at a, at a big picture, I, I just want to say that I, I really agree with the points that Julie was making in that. I do think that we need to, to look at how we might be evolving. And when we look at potentially new initiatives, how they might replace or, or take over certain things. Um, I think that's, that's part of our job just into prioritizing and growing, and especially as budgets are constrained. So I want to echo that sentiment and um, I also just wonder if, um, well, I guess I also just want to support, throw my individual support for, for making this a priority and, and studying it. And then last, I'm, I'm curious if in a, not that there's a no cost or no lift, but in a easier, lower first step, if, if we could just put out a, an informal poll to our students in the near term. You know, just sending out a, a Google form that our high school students could perform, um, respond to right now could give us a good indication. Um, you know, like Robin said, like I know we talk about hearing student voice and making things for them that impact them. And I have a hard time imagining that that sleep wouldn't be a top priority for them. And it'd be great to hear directly.
So again, part of that committee's work is to survey parents, kids, staff. I'm, I'm just, I respect the question, but now you're, now we're getting into nice survey, everybody. Now we're getting into the work of the actual and it sort of never ends potentially. That's just, I can do it. We can, we can do it if the board wants us to do it, but, but now we've got a number of areas that we're asking for and it starts to, but anyway, I just, just, it's a, it's just.
I'm getting lobbied, so I'm okay. I'm getting a lot of firsthand data. Julie.
I get a lot of firsthand data in my house as well. I was going to say, I think we might get a feel for some of that when we look at what neighboring districts have, have studied and learned. I think that would be super helpful information um, that we will want as we get into it. But I think for the first discussion, I, I would bet that we can find a lot of that. And it also might help us better inform what we want to dig into better if, when we go out to do our own research.
Jill, just to follow up on Julie's point, I think in addition to looking at the districts that have done this and what they did, I think it's also important to talk to the districts that looked at it and took no action.
Yes.
And understand the reasons why.
Great. Thank you. John.
So I, I looked at this with a bit of skepticism because none of us flagged it when we went through the strategic plan. A lot of it was emotion uh, in other districts. So I guess my question from a process perspective, you know, Dave's point, you know, this is pretty ambitious. Extremely ambitious. Um, so how do we kind of, again, I don't want to put the cart before the horse. Before we kind of review our strategic plan and kind of layer that in. So I'm echoing Dave's point, but uh, trying to make it louder.
I, I think, I think I would agree that I don't think we can rush to, yes, we may be interested, but then we probably have to take something else off the table. So I think we probably have to make that determination. Dave.
Yeah, I wasn't saying we shouldn't have follow up, but I just, at this point, like I'm not, yeah, I, I think tread slowly.
Or keep expectations in reality right now.
Okay. All right. So we will revisit this on the 14th with more information. Thank you all for the work. All right. First reading and discussion on proposed revisions to board policies. Ninety-three twenty, time, place and notice of meetings. Ninety-three thirty, public meetings and executive session. Ninety-three fifty, quorum and voting procedures. Ninety-three sixty minutes. Ninety-two forty, official duties secretary. Ninety-two twenty, official duties chairperson. Fifty-fifty administration of student medications in the schools. March.
So many of these changes provide for board conduct of meetings that are held remotely. There are updates to the freedom of information laws. So in ninety-three twenty, time, place and notice of meeting, there are those changes, but also um, in paragraph three, A, shipment's model policy does give the board the option to begin at a certain time, but not proceed with any agenda item absent after a certain time. So for example, it says meetings start at seven thirty after, let's say 10:30, you would need a two thirds vote to continue with the agenda. That is an optional provision, but it, some boards have adopted it.
John.
So Marge loves that 10:30, you know, where she keeps going to it. You know, I, when uh, when I was on a former board, I think we picked 11. I mean, and again, I'm not a, I'm picking on Marge, but uh, you know, after 11 o'clock, especially for those who have to commute or get up early. So I'd really be in favor if we put 11 o'clock. Um, and we'd be going for three and a half hours. We rarely meet and reap shit. But I think putting in a board policy would be helpful to the board to, you know, so you wouldn't start a hefty lift at 10:30.
Dave.
So I guess my question, and, and I don't know if anyone else in the board would want to have a conversation, but the other side of this, the seven thirty start time. So I kind of like the three hours, John, but um, the, the seven thirty start time, I just think that the last time we really looked at this that I can recall as a board was about 2018. Uh, world's changed a little bit in terms of people having electronic meetings, online meetings, resources, things we've built into our policy here. We have all our staff here in person starting at seven thirty. I don't know if in the new world, we should really consider making that early. Uh, I mean, I don't see any reason for those of us to still commute on the train. We couldn't kick this off at six. I don't think that's realistic, but just, just a thought that maybe we should economize time of our, our staff.
And you've really gotten Marge interested.
Julie.
Thank you. Um, I, I would just offer the, the other side of that, which is I put my cap on, my meter starts usually at around four, three thirty, and I'm driving people here and there until a six o'clock start feels like the middle of the afternoon for my regular daily schedule. Which is not to say that there isn't room to change from seven thirty, but I think um, six is.
I think Dave was saying seven, not, not six.
No, I had said six. Yeah, yeah. And again, I'm not saying it has to be six. I was just throwing out with people on the board like to discuss, and then I anchored it saying six. We now have feedback in this discussion. Maybe six doesn't work for a certain board member. I'd love to hear from others, but I defer.
The, the, the rest of my point was also that we have to factor in um, executive session. If we're going to have executive sessions, sessions before meetings and meetings would start perhaps as early as six, that, that gets quite early.
Marge, what happens to the rest of the agenda that hasn't been met?
You would continue it at the next meeting.
It's tabled. So this, it seems to me that we might need to look more carefully at the agendas that we're setting if, if we have, because like, that seems unsustainable to me to just keep kicking it down. And we have certain things like, and to me, maybe it's a bigger conversation if, if it's really that, but perhaps we need to think about are bi-weekly meetings the right thing? Are, you know, what? I think, I think it's kind of a question of efficiency as well. Um, so I have, I have some concerns about this and I do think it opens the doors to, to creep into other areas too. Like is, is the next portion limiting public comment because we have an agenda to get to? So I have, I have a lot of questions about this. And I'm curious, did this come from? This came from an existing policy in Shipman and Goodman?
Shipman and Goodman's model policy gives the board the option to do that.
You don't have to do.
Great, but it wasn't, there wasn't an expression of a desire for that from within our own board?
You want to speak to it?
Well.
At the committee.
At the committee, yes, there was interest in this, but it did not get included because we asked for it. It came to us to consider because it's in the model policy from Shipman and Goodman.
And we thought it was a good idea as we reviewed it, because again, you don't have to quit at 10:30. Right? I mean, I, I'm sorry, I can't read.
Yeah, you don't have to. You don't have to. You just have to vote to keep going.
Right? So you can keep going. You know, there's no requirement to kick it. Um, you know, we have, just sorry I jumped in, but you know, we also have had hour and a half, if not longer, public comment. And to your question, public comment was on another policy. We're, we're discussing it on, at the uh, policy committee. Um, but you know, sometimes it's beyond our control too. And so instead of tackling a media item around 10:30 at night, you know, it would be great if we had a light agenda at the next meeting because we know from the master agenda to kick it uh, to that meeting.
Greg.
Usually we don't have a lot of people out in the audience by 10:30 either.
Greg.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like the idea of forced efficiency. I mean, we just talked about something that we've had a lot of parents bring up, communities brought it up. And we're saying like, we have to force efficiencies. And I think that we should do the same thing and hold ourselves accountable to that in terms of how often we meet, when we meet, what time we meet, how long we're meeting for. And if we do have an agenda, why don't we have specific time slots for the different agenda items? And as we're going through, they run out of time, we say, okay, on to the next one.
Dave.
I, I, I got to piggyback on that one. I mean, I've long been a proponent for forced efficiency in that um, when people give a PowerPoint, I, I don't need the mission of the district on the first three slides. I don't want anybody ever reading words on a slide to me. We're all prepared. We're all professionals. Except for the fact we don't get paid. And we all do our work and we're ready to go. So let's jump in and have a conversation. But you know, the presentations, I think there's a lot of room for efficiency and how this is presented as well to be considered.
So I, there's two different things. There's the policy in front of us. And then I think there's an overall discussion about meeting efficiency that we, sounds like we want to have. So let's find a spot for that. Um, gather some talking points from folks. I can do that work. And we can put together a, a discussion amongst here at the table, but amongst ourselves about some things we want to do in terms of meeting practice. That does not have to be piggybacked with this 10:30. I will just put my stake in the ground. I like that idea of just flagging that that's an appropriate end time to a meeting. And I will definitely say that my um, efficacy starts to decline very quickly. And by that time, it's pretty bad. So I think, I like the idea of just queuing up that we think that this is an appropriate amount of time for a meeting. It's not always in our control. But I think it keeps us focused on planning for at max a three hour meeting when we're doing our agenda planning. And is, I would argue a more civilized time. It's even a little later than civilized. So I would say, I would be a proponent of keeping this in here.
Me too.
Sarah. Do we want to talk about moving the meetings earlier to, if we want to start at seven and we could, if we start at seven, the exec sessions could start at six. We could also do exactly, we've done it in the past, but we do it after the meeting, depending on whether or not it is, um, you know.
Or, or if we do have an executive session, we could have the meeting at seven thirty and then start an executive session as we normally do. I mean, just on the odd kind of time, I don't know if that's allowed to change.
Yeah, I don't think you can, because it says all regular meetings shall start at X.
Yeah.
It'd be great to be amongst amongst, wouldn't it?
Not going to happen.
How does it impact uh, your schedule, Brennan and Swaha? Seven, seven thirty, does it matter? How's your school day?
On Tuesdays.
It's fine.
Anytime. I, I mean, unless it's tech week, I'm, I'm done with, I'm done with everything usually by six, so.
Okay, okay. And last time we polled you guys.
The earlier the better.
You were happier with seven?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure I don't have to ask if you'd rather have an end time.
I think they all like 10:30.
Okay, just um, why don't we do this easy way? Does anybody prefer seven?
I'm good with seven.
You're good. Fine, okay. Okay.
Is it seven, is it seven to 10:30 or seven to 10?
Well, that's a good question. Seven to, Dave? Seven to 10?
This is just a first reading.
It is just a first reading. I'm just trying to get a sense of where to send the policy so that, yeah, we're not voting on anything. So what we're asking people to go back and contemplate is moving meetings from seven to 10 now. We'd have to re-vote on all the regular meetings. And for 30 days, we'd have only special meetings if we change it.
Or you do it next fiscal.
Yeah, we could start it.
Set it, just set it, uh, start date, Marge.
For July one.
Make it, okay.
Okay. So we're considering seven and we're considering 10 or 10:30, I would say. And obviously there's no obligation for us to stay here until 10 or 10:30 if the, if the work doesn't keep us at the table.
I, I'm sorry, I'm going to go, the extracurricular in sports kind of timing, what did Julie's pointer starting to hit me as I just said? I mean, unless everybody says seven is better, I don't know. Kind of wobbling right now.
I tell you what, um, Alan, can you guys do a doodle poll and, but before the um, next meeting? That gives everybody a minute to think about it. Okay.
March seven, ninety-three thirty, those, the changes here are just stylistic from Shipman and Goodman, public meetings and executive session. Ninety-three fifty, quorum and voting procedures. Um, they're also stylistic, but also to reflect people participating remotely, which Mr. Cini did point out that the policy does require people participating remotely, there be a roll call vote. And so we should, that policy requires that now. Ninety-three sixty minutes, again, it just clarifies the procedure, how to post and keep minutes. Policies ninety-two forty and ninety-two twenty have been changed to eliminate the requirement that the secretary or in her absence, the chairperson sign. or in her absence, the chairperson sign town treasurer orders because the town said they no longer need signed orders. And policy 5050 administration of student medication in schools, that's been reviewed by Emily Merritt, the director of health services, and Tim Keneffict, our, um, medical advisor. It complies with current state of law.
Just backing up on the minutes policy that, uh, we haven't been totally following. On our subcommittees all need to take minutes. It just needs to be a list of attendees and the agenda items. Cass has put together a, a, thank you, a, a template for us. And they'll bring it to a meeting and we, the chair can just sign off, uh, cause there are no votes to record. But just all subcommittees will have minutes as of now. Friday, I guess.
We started last.
I did it yesterday.
We did start it last week.
All right. As of last week. Thank you, Julie. All right. Any other questions? Okay. So we'll bring that back for a vote next, next, uh, meeting. Okay. Further discussion on fiscal year 25 budget. So, as everybody knows, we were at the Board of Finance for their budget vote last night. They reduced our budget by $2 million. So we are now at a new budget of $119,864,475 or a 4.732 increase. So we've got some more difficult work in front of us. We may face even tougher choices than what we did the first time in our first step. Uh, we can and will work together. It is the way town government works. And while we wouldn't wish it to be so, the budget is back on our desks. So we'll get down to the work of it. We're gonna give it to, I think the processes Alan and Rich will take the first look like they do with the budget. Uh, they'll create a prioritized proposal. Uh, they're planning to present it to us over three meetings. They'll present on May 7th, give us a chance to see what's there. We'll have a, uh, discussion on May 14th, which will be after the RTM vote. So we'll know for sure what our final numbers are. And then we'll vote, uh, at the end of the May, at our May 28th meeting. That gives everybody a chance to receive it, do some deliberating and then vote. At that time, um, Rich and Alan will also present to us items that are running count, running counter to how they were budgeted. We have some items like health insurance that are running higher. We have some, or I think legal fees. Some items that may be running, uh, advantageously. Um, we also know that ECR is, uh, this year not, um, hitting what we budgeted for this year. Um, we don't know what next year's going to be, but we can talk about the fact that there could be some, um, it's a good time to talk about any sort of budgetary adjustments we may want to make or not. Okay? So, um.
Madam Kirkland, can I just note there that May 7th is actually an additional, additional meeting. It's not on the, it's not on the calendar if people can.
So we're assuming that everybody, I mean, if you, we should probably do a quorum call. If you know that we're not going to be able to be here on the 7th, that would be very good information to have.
Sorry for skipping.
Now, yeah.
So it would be a first meeting on the 7th and then the other two meetings are standing board meetings or regular board meetings, the 14th and the 28th. So we're asking if you can add the 7th. Thank you for, for pointing that out, Alan. And I think, um, so just in, so are we, are we, are we good with the 7th, we think? Yep.
Yeah, on that end, yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay. Makes sense. Everybody comfortable with the process. I mean, as much as you're gonna be comfortable.
Sarah.
And so Alan and Rich, what do you need from us, if anything, right now?
I honestly don't need anything. At this, at this point, what I hear the board want me to do is, uh, bring back the administrative prioritized list of how we make suggestions of how we might meet the, the Board of Ed Guide, or the Board of Finance guidance.
Yes, Dave.
I, I just missed in that scheduling error. Is there an ad cut? Is it going to be the same or how exactly do we do this at the board level?
We do have to actually ident, uh, make, um, modifications at the line item level. So we will actually vote line items up and down like as happens on ad cut night. But we're asking Alan and Rich to come with the first proposal, uh, and, and suggest to us how it get handled.
Thank you.
John?
I believe that's kind of the process we did in 2020. So they'll take a, you know, their priorities as the administrators and then we can work through that. And I think if we need to, there's even, I hope we don't, but there's more time to add another meeting too.
Especially, yeah.
Would we, would we want to schedule a public hearing or something like that in that or?
No. I, I think with, um, two meetings following the 7th, there's an opportunity for the public to opine before we vote. That would be three public comment sections. Uh, I wouldn't suggest a fourth meeting. Well, I wouldn't suggest it. I don't mean to say no. It's not, the board certainly can't do that. We're not statutorily required to.
Understood. My point is to Mr. Cini's earlier point that if we have an hour and a half of public comment, it's going to make meetings run long and da, 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 da. So I'm just wondering if it, is it easier just to ask the public to speak on one night? Than to have them speak three nights in a row for an hour, three hours each time?
That didn't preclude any sort of.
Understood, I'm just.
I, I think that, um.
We will make, we can make time in, sorry, we can make time in the agenda for, you know, when we're.
Yeah.
Going through the, okay. The second meeting probably will be a good moment to kind of, for the public to opine on.
You know, cause I'm just picturing that whatever we, whatever they, whatever the administration comes up with are gonna be hot button items. And there's going, it's going to affect someone somewhere and there's going to be a lot of people who are upset about the choices we're going to have to make. And they're gonna want to voice their displeasure or, or, or say, find an alternate to my, my piece that I want to protect.
So I, I think here, I think it's critical that the public have a chance to comment. Um, I think that's different than a hearing. I think the purpose of a budgetary hearing is to hear where the public is in space. And it's really meant to inform in a, in a very different way. But I do think we should set our minds that the public absolutely will engage around this and then we're gonna need to leave time for that. So if we do find that it reaches a, a level that it impacts the work that we need to do, that we do have an, I guess, what is the, the drop dead date, Rich or Alan, on when we'd have to make a decision? We, we have, this is over a four week process. There is a 21st in the middle, but what would be the latest to you guys anyway?
I mean, technically you have until June 30th. Um, the longer you stretch it out, the more uncertainty is for staff.
Right, yes.
So even a month of this or six weeks of this is a lot.
Okay. So I think with that 21st in the middle, if we need it. Greg?
One suggestion and a question. Um, for whatever version of the budget, like it sounds like we're gonna get a new budget. Is it possible to get like a, some, like very simple summary of the changes?
It will be a very simple summary of the changes. You're not gonna get a hold of the budget.
So it's just the sum, okay.
It's, will look more like, like the.
And then the question was like, when, when will we, is that gonna come on the day of the meeting or will we get it in advance?
No, you'll get it, what is it, the, the third or so of May at the latest?
Oh, okay. So it would be, it sounds like 11 days or a few days before.
Just, just to clarify, we're working off of the approved budget.
Right.
Okay. So we're, the, the last budget book, which I, I kind of figure out which one it is in my bedroom. That's the one that they're working off of and it'll be the, basically the, I mean, in this case it'll be a cut list.
So it'll be $2 million of changes.
Correct.
Here are the lines that are up to the $2 million that are being proposed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Sarah.
So, um, Sarah.
Um, so I just wanted to, with the three, the, the four of us talked about the schedule before. We talked about potentially having a meeting, um, on the 30th, but because of break next week, um, I don't want to put words in your mouth after, Ali, but you felt that it was a little too soon, um, to get thoughts organized well. Um, I'm, in, in contemplating that further, are there any concerns about staff not knowing? You know, having, you know, just being at limbo for a little bit in terms of.
Yes, yes. And after last night, every day that goes by is, uh, until this is resolved is, it's up in the air, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think, I think the reality is there is once again, a very human component.
Right.
Of these discussions. Um, so thank you for raising it. But I, I think, I think it's important that the time be taken to put together the right proposal.
No, I, I agree. I just, I think that this is a, $2 million is a lot and it's gonna cause a lot of angst in a lot of different people.
Okay.
I think the first time through, uh, probably will be, uh, if you take, I don't know, topic A is this. We're suggesting this, it'll be a description of it with what the, what the addition or cut that it happens to be with that. And then all the line items will follow it if and when that was approved or not approved.
Okay. Are we good with the process? All right. Discussion on revisions to approve board master agenda February 24 through August 24.
So we'll make some quick, uh, changes, uh, point them out. Uh, April 10th, well, I just added in that we are updating the master agenda. So that's, uh, April 23rd. Uh, which is next week, actually, that, that agenda is on the extension of the YMCA. We're just proposing that moving forward, that we don't really need to do that every year. It's working proposed parties. And we can discuss the details up next week, but I would suggest that it's part of an efficiency, but I don't think we need that anymore. But the board certainly can determine that.
Wait, Dr. Ali, you mean we don't need the agreement or we don't need to discuss?
We don't, uh, we don't need it. I don't believe we need an agenda moving forward. Uh, May 7th, I'll, I'll add in, right, that, that for a budget item. I'm assuming that's just one, one topic of discussion. At least now it is.
With public comment, yeah.
Yes.
Maybe, maybe the way you structure that one is, uh, presentation and public comment after.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And then we're adding the May 7th.
Yes. Uh, so May 14th, the last bullet, uh, you, I don't think you have in color, so it may not stand out. Uh, further discussion of school start times. I'm, I'm thinking that's just what we just decided. May 28th, uh, uh, thank you for moving forward, the end of year evaluation of the superintendent. And also, uh, over the page on the June 25th, uh, fifth is the superintendent's contract. Uh, appreciate the, the board's consideration of wrapping that up before the end of the year type thing. That's helpful. Appreciate it.
We also wanted to note it on the agenda, the master agendas, because we've had some difficulty with it moving through space because we just didn't get them scheduled. So what we're trying to do is pin down an actual schedule and make sure that they're happening in a timely and expected manner.
So looking at the, like, looking at what's on the screen right now, May 14th to 28th. So now those are also gonna have.
Yes.
A giant other.
Mm-hmm.
Very lengthy potentially item on there.
Yep.
Is that the right way to think about it?
Yep.
Yep.
It is.
That, uh, the superintendent's end of year evaluation?
You actually have it on both the 28th and the 11th.
Yes, so that's why he thought. Well, you can put an executive sanction anywhere, anywhere you want there. That's fine.
I, I guess my, my point was just like, you know, there's nothing we can do about it at this point, but thinking for going forward. Like we're six months into the budget process and it seems like everything takes a backseat to the budget while we're in the budget process, which means that for half of the year, we're just focused on the budget.
Yes.
And that seems, efficiencies, we need to do something about that.
Well, remember, this is atypical.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We should be done with this.
We should be, well, that should be.
We should be done with this. So why don't we do the superintendent's evaluation on the 11th, just to clear it out from the 28th? That gives us a chance to get through that process.
Yeah.
Makes sense to everybody.
Yep.
I'm wondering about, since we are unfortunately still dealing with this year's budget, on the 14th, when we're talking about special possible action on the pre-budget topics and timeline, that's for next year?
I think that's, I would punt that to the summer.
Can we punt that?
You can.
Please.
That in July.
Cause then it would be a four year.
Yeah.
The, the board wanted to bring back the, uh, bring it forward a little bit. Uh, the master agenda for, uh, February through August to the May as opposed to the June. So that's a simple change.
Yeah.
Thereafter, we'll sit, we'll have to, Cassie will, will have to send out doodles for the summer because while it says this, that everybody has different schedules. So we'll, we'll, we'll get that out. But we can get that out before the break here, so we'll see where we stand.
Great. Just one second. Do we know when the special meeting in July will be?
That's what I was saying. Yeah.
Good question. Can we just back up for a quick second to May? There's also on the 28th, a mental health and wellness update, but I feel like we just had one.
We did just have one.
So is that one coming off as well?
Let's take that off.
Great. Good idea. Yeah, the 28th take off.
Isn't that the one that I emailed about in terms of getting?
No, no, uh, no, the, the, um, uh, technology, that's a part of the technology one.
So that's instructional technology update?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And that's a big one too. So.
That is a big one.
And then June 18th, or what are we doing on June 18th? I know it was an approved meeting that was added, right?
That meeting, I, I believe, uh, my recollection is correct, that was set there tentatively. And yes, sometimes in the summer, we need to get together for hire so that we don't lose people, so to speak, right? So that was, I think that was a placeholder that the board put in place for that.
Okay.
So we don't need it, we don't need it.
And we only have one in August?
Mm-hmm.
Do we ever need to do?
Yes, we have only one in August.
They're usually hard to staff.
Yeah.
Not staff, not you.
Do we ever need to do one for hiring there? Should we pencil one in or no?
I think we, we play it out here because if, if we, if we need to get the hiring, we have to come do it in July or otherwise we have to do it.
Okay. So just to review quickly, we've, um, added in May 7th. We've, we've moved the discussion and possible action on Board of Education pre-budget topics and timeline to July. May 28th, we've taken out the mental health and wellness update and the superintendent end of year evaluation. Cause that evaluation sits on the 11th. Um, and then we just identified wanting to have a conversation about board efficient, meeting efficiency. That could be in July as part of our, um, board evaluation, maybe an explicit component. Would that work for folks, Julie? Sorry, just back to the mental health and wellness update. We're, we're not seeing climate survey results that quickly, right? That wasn't driving that timing?
Nope, that wasn't.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to.
But actually, when would we see the climate survey results? Because I don't see it on the agenda right now if it's not.
It currently is, uh, not scheduled. I'd have to just look at the time and I'm happy to bring it up. If the board would like to see the results, that's fine.
Yes.
Well, like what are we gonna see there? Cause if we can't see the questions, how are we gonna be able to see the results?
Uh, well, you, you can, you can see the questions. You can, the board members have the right to actually inspect it. Uh, through the nondisclosure agreement, you can, you can actually see the questions that we would, would have to be. Certainly in advance, you couldn't see them, right? Um, so there's a way to at least, uh, represent a report on this. We have to be able to report out on it. So we'll, we'll have to find a way to make a report out on that.
Yeah, Dr. I, they, I thought that the reason, one of the main reasons we were using that survey was because of the data and the ability to analyze it. So I would think they would have some kind of a report that would be standard, right?
Of course, thanks.
Okay.
Dave?
Yeah, the NDA that was circulated, I guess the question for me, is that the version that was signed by the district or was that negotiated?
That's, that's part of the memorandum of understanding that was signed by the district.
And then is that NDA just for the evaluation period or is that the operative agreement that covers the go forward? Like when we got into a contract with a vendor with their confidential information terms in there that modified the NDA? Cause there's a number of questions as drafted that I don't know that I would sign that necessarily, uh, as a person. But I don't know if that's what we signed as a district. So just the way that document flows, without seeing the other documents, I can't really understand where we are here. So I hope more of those will be forthcoming.
Uh, you're talking about more information forthcoming specifically?
So the one NDA, just reading as is standalone.
Yep.
I don't know if that's what was entered into by the district word for word? Or if the district negotiated some of the terms in that.
No, they didn't. No, it was negotiate, it was, it was word for word.
Okay. And so normally you will see an NDA in an early evaluation period. You get into a substantive agreement and contract with a vendor, there may be confidential information terms there, which will supersede the original NDA terms. I'm trying to understand whether it's an MOU or other agreement, are the terms in there that somehow overtake over versus the NDA? Or is it involved in vision that the NDA covers this entire relationship?
So another option, forgive me for cutting you off, would be to put. So another option, forgive me for cutting you off, would be to put this discussion on the next meeting so that we can have it. Or we could do it via email. I I I think, I I understand your questions and I'm not intending to circumvent them, I'm just constrained by the agenda.
Totally get it, I appreciate that. And I guess one follow-up question, just a thing about scheduling. I I know that we had Patrice do a number of interviews and conversations around the district, is that something we're going to be seeing in here? And I just don't see where that topic lies.
So it was presented to the communications committee, is it coming back up? It's coming back up really with more action items. Uh, because, but there is in the communications packet from last week?
Yes, the, the end of March, March twenty-seventh. The report.
Um, so would you please take a look at what's in communications and see if you would like it to come as is or if you're satisfied with?
God, yeah, I wasn't sure if it was in here already, so thank you for clarification.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Um. All right. Are we good to vote on this agenda as amended? Okay, may have a motion to approve the master agenda, February twenty-four through August twenty-four as amended. That's done as seconded by John and it's unanimous. Okay, public comments.
Good evening, if anyone in person would like to participate in public comment, please come to the podium and wait for the chair to recognize you. Please state your name, address for the record and you'll have up to three minutes. If anybody online would like to participate, please use the raised hand icon. We have no raised hands at this time.
Okay, if that may have a motion to adjourn, that's John seconded by Julie. And that is unanimous. Thank you all very much. Have a good, not ten thirty evening.